Before I begin the festivities this evening, I would like to acknowledge a momentous occasion. This is the last meeting that our stalwart Code Enforcement Administrator Craig Walker will be with us. This is the last meeting of 21 years of meetings that he has kept us on the rails, even though we made significant efforts to get off them. And we very much appreciate his guidance, his intelligence, and his thoughtfulness in all that he has done, and thank him for 21 years of friendship and service.
It's been a lot of fun. It's really been an exciting job, and working with you folks, and being here at the pulse of everything that is the basis of what this city is built upon has been a privilege. So, I've been very happy.
Now we're gonna have to move up to that.
Appreciate all the hard work all of you've done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Big shoes to fill.
Thank you. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we'll call the cases in the order in which they appear in the agenda. I will ask the appellant to come forward and be sworn in, and be seated in the chairs to my right. And we will then hear testimony from the appellant. We ask the appellants to confine their testimony to 10 minutes, if at all possible. Following that, we will ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal, and from anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. We ask that those offering testimony, those people offering testimony, confine their presentation to five minutes, if at all possible. Then we will check in with Code Enforcement to see if there are any comments from the Code Enforcement Office. And then, if there's been any testimony offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case prior to moving on to the next one. Our first case this evening is Case 3921 ECR PDK LLC. The applicant requests that the board overturn the code administrator's decision that the subject property must comply with Article 2877G2, and rule that the subject property may have a non-conforming parking spot in the setback area on its southerly side for property located at 46 North State Street in a CVP Civic Performance District. Mr. Meckel, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you start, Craig, did you want to offer any comments on this?
Actually, before we start, may I say something? I'm gonna ask for a continuance for 30 days, if that'll please the chair and the members of the board. And I also wanted an opportunity to say congratulations and thank you to Craig. I didn't know this was his last night. But on behalf of ECR PDK LLC, we're asking for a continuance to the next meeting.
Perhaps the best thing for us to do, then, would be to...
That would make my presentation very short.
Yes, to recess the hearing, to the next zoning board hearing, which will be in September.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
All right. Craig, did you want to make any remarks before?
No, there's no need to make any comment at this point.
Okay, do I hear...
I'm just curious, in this unusual instance, if this is Craig's last meeting, and typically in these situations, doesn't Code Enforcement kind of give their position?
Well, we'll just be turned over to...
It would just be...
Got it.
Dave will do it.
There are competent people behind me.
Fair enough. Yes, very much.
Dave will get to have all the fun in September.
Got it.
Does that require a motion?
Yes, I think so.
Is a motion on table or recess? What's in order?
Recess.
So I make a motion that we recess this case until the September meeting.
That's the 3921. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The vote is unanimous. The motion carries. We will...
And I was gonna say, yeah, and as public notice, just to advise everybody that we will reconvene then at the first, what's the date for September?
Whatever the September meeting is.
September 1st.
September 1st.
Yeah, September 1st.
We'll revisit the issue.
Yes, and there's generally no public notice, or no requirement for public notice to go out. So this is the notice for the hearing.
Okay, very good. That takes us to Case 4021, Robert and Jane Crevier. The applicants wish to construct a 20 by 26-foot garage at an existing single-family dwelling, and request the following variances: to Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a structure to be located 7 feet 2 inches plus or minus from the southerly side property line, where a 15-foot setback is required, and to Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a structure to be located 19 feet plus or minus from the front property line, where a 25-foot setback is required. This for property located at 3 Gay Street in an RM Residential Medium Density District. Are either of the Creviers here this evening? Please come forward. Good evening. Will you both be testifying?
Yes.
May I swear you're both in?
Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
And Mrs. Crevier. Very good, thank you. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, you did.
All right. Please fill us in on why you believe that the variances are appropriate.
Well, looking over the neighborhood, there's plenty of garages and stuff there. The area that I plan on putting it in is not gonna exceed the existing pavement that's there. So I thought that would work.
So they'd be placing it right back in this, I got the photo up here of your property. Yeah, so it'd be right back in that area.
Right where the car is, roughly. Yeah, it's gonna sit right there. It's gonna stay flush with the front and the back of the house. It's not gonna exceed anymore. Well, I guess it was gonna come 2 feet closer in the front.
Which one is it? Number five, I think? Yep, I see. We have a plan here. Says it's gonna be 19 feet 17 sixteenths inches, seven sixteenths inches.
Yep.
I hope you, your contractor has a really good transit when he lays out that.
Well, that was just all measured with a tape anyways.
I understand. Is, are there questions from the board?
It's gonna be attached to the house.
Yeah, it's gonna be attached to the mudroom, yes.
And the mudroom is existing?
Yes.
And the garage is 20 feet wide?
Yep. And it will show that the existing pavement is about 21 or so wide now, so...
Is there a reason why you didn't slide it a little further back on the lot?
We would be hitting the pool, or be too close to the pool...
I see.
...when snow comes off.
I see.
So we still, with the garage, will be able to fit two cars still in front of, off the road on our property.
Your neighbor seems to have a garage pretty close to the property line. Is that true?
No, he can actually...
It's not as close as it looks.
He can drive a car in his backyard.
He drives a... Yeah, they drive, he has a, well, there's new owners now. They just moved in back in December. But the original owner that put the garage up and stuff, they have a utility, they had a utility trailer. They'd drive right in there and stuff. So they had plenty of room.
Any other questions from the board? Nick?
I'm good.
Tim?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Andrew? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? That letter that you gave me, Craig, was that on this case?
No, it's on Kellum.
It's the next case?
It's on the other one.
Okay. Any comments from Code Enforcement?
No, pretty straightforward.
All right.
Nothing to add.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and the board will invite the board to deliberate. We heard a request to add a 20-foot-wide garage to the side of an existing house. We heard testimony that there really isn't any other place to put it, and it couldn't be any further from the property, or the front yard property line because of some existing construction, or from the side yard because of the also existing construction. How does this look to you, Nick?
Well, I think this board traditionally has been reasonably in support of folks putting in garages where that seems to be a common, common feature in the neighborhood. So I was, I intend to be somewhat supportive of that.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree. We've generally been supportive of garages as an improvement to the property. And I think that nature of the lot is such that if they did push it back, as was questioned, it would disrupt the, I think she said it would disrupt the pool. It just makes sense to put it where they're proposing it.
I feel the same way. They're placing it within the existing driveway. It's gonna be in line with the existing house. So to move it any other, to move it back any further would look kind of ridiculous, and it would impact the pool. It would be so much further back from the house to meet that front setback. So I'm in support of it.
Andrew?
I agree.
I agree with my colleagues as well. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the variance. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Both variances, I assume that motion was for both variances?
I guess it was.
Yeah. Both variances are granted.
I'm starting to get used to not doing roll calls.
I know. We finally got a roll call down, and now we're...
I screwed that up for about nine meetings, and now I feel sort of bad that I can't do it anymore.
Oh, right, right, right.
All right. The next case is Case 4121 Alexander Mattson III. The applicant wishes to replace an existing 4-foot-by-11-foot enclosed porch with an 8-foot-by-18-foot enclosed three-season room on the front of an existing single-family dwelling, and request a variance to Article 2841H Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a structure to be located 13 feet plus or minus from the northern property line, where a 25-foot setback is required for property located at 1 Kellum Street in an RM Residential Medium Density District. Is Mr. Mattson here, or someone representing him? Good evening. Will you both be testifying?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Alexander Mattson III.
And Michelle Mattson.
What would you like us to know by way of support for your appeal?
The property was built in 1930, well before any of the zoning ordinance were put in place. The setback, which I was surprised when they submitted the plans to code, how far back the property line was actually set from the road. Basically, where the fence is in that picture, you can almost see right around that, just beyond the fence is where...
Oops, oh, sorry.
That's all right. Right there was a property line, so I was very surprised. But you can see there's another...
Study this technique, Dave. It's really important.
There's another six feet of grass in front of that. I understand that is a public right-of-way. But, so the porch that's there is 4 by 11. It does need work. We've lived there for three years now. We bought the house. We're hoping a forever home. And we've had to trim the door in the porch. It has settled a little bit. So, we're currently siding the house right now. And before we get around to that side, we would like to, if this is possible, put that structure up. And it's just gonna be three-season porch, just a place to come in. More in line that our plan is, we've talked to our in-laws and my folks, that if anything ever happens to them, be able to get them into the house and take care of them. And the way it's set up right now, there's no way that if they ever need a wheelchair, that you'd ever be able to put anything up there. I did submit a picture. You can see the line is currently where the steps are, and that's actually where the property, or, excuse me, where the edge of the porch is gonna be. And I will have to resubmit plans to code, because the steps were originally with code were off the front of the porch. And with the variance being needed, we'd almost be on the property line at that point. So we discussed it, and we wanted to put it off towards the driveway side. So that way it doesn't encroach any further...
The stairs?
The stairs, yes.
They're not covered by the roof?
Not covered by the roof, correct, yep. And there'll still be a little flowerbed there, and then the plan is to have a flowerbed on the other side currently.
So, what I'm looking at, then, here with the white door...
Yep.
And the little gable over it?
Yep.
That's the existing that you show as a gray rectangle that's subsumed by your proposed...
Yes, sir.
New design?
Yes, sir. There should be the picture with, and then if you look at the, submitted the picture with the red...
Yeah, I didn't get the photograph, I don't think.
The photographs.
For some reason, photographs only got so far. No proof.
Those pictures are from years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, he's gonna make...
So you can see where the red line is. I put those stakes. That's gonna be the size of the new property. So it actually, it's...
And then it's gonna go to the right on the front of the house, if you look at it here?
Yes, yep. It's gonna be about 2 and 1/2 feet from that window, this first-floor window.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So if you include this, the steps, the total encroachment will be no further?
No further, no. It'll be exactly the same. It'll actually be taking up that walkway right there. So you'll actually have more grass in the front.
They're moving the steps over to the other end, so they won't be approaching that direction.
So basically, your footprint of this new property would basically be where the end of the steps are?
Correct, yep. It'll just be longer.
So that's where you're getting your extra square footage?
Yeah, more user-friendly, yes.
I'm just curious, you've got a lot of, your lot is, I mean, your house is really all totally on one side of the lot, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
That, I guess that other side isn't very functional for adding any...
No, that's the garage, and there's really, on the, you can see right...
All open.
All open, yeah.
So that is almost like your, serves as a backyard?
Yes. Yeah, as you can see, there's not, even the front, there's not a lot of space between the property line and the house. It was developed well before zoning was put in place.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Andrew, anything? Anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? I do have a letter. This is from Dan Feltes and Aaron Feltes. "We live at 44 Hope Avenue in Concord, directly across the street from Mr. Mattson, who resides at 1 Kellum Street. We received notice of the hearing tonight. We aren't able to personally attend. We're writing to express our support for the variance request by Mr. Mattson in replacing his enclosed porch with an 8-by-18-foot three-season porch on the front of his home." Is there any comment from Code Enforcement?
No, I don't have anything to add to this one.
All right. In that case, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And I'll invite the board to deliberate on the case. We have a request for an addition on the street side of a house. We heard testimony that the existing house on the property predates the zoning ordinance, and is therefore in a place that makes it impossible to add on to the occupied section of the house without violating the setbacks. Andrew, how do you see this one?
Well, I think they, I appreciate that they're, they made a design that's not gonna encroach further than what they currently have, even though they are adding on some square footage, which I think is for reasonable use. And the way the house is put on the lot, as you just said, there's not, there's no way to really add on at all without, you know, coming into the setback. So I think, I think it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable extension.
I don't think it'll have a negative impact again. They're going as far out as the steps currently are, and the fact they're moving the steps to the side to try to not make it more non-compliant is fine. And it is a corner lot, which always messes up everything people want to do on their property, so...
Yeah, I know that from personal experience. Jim?
Yeah, I think that Andrew and Laura captured my views as well.
Nick?
Ditto.
All right. I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues. One of the purposes, I think, of variances is to reconcile buildings that were built way before the ordinance was created with the fact that the ordinance catches them by surprise. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variances as requested.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance, was it more than one variance?
Oh, sorry. I know, I put an S on their variance.
Yeah, it was just one variance. And the variance is granted. Mr. and Mrs. Mattson, you're all set. You're welcome.
Chris, before you read the next case, I seem to have four copies.
There's...
Is it four different?
Yeah. There's three different requests on the agenda, and each one has its own individual variance application for it.
It's almost the same thing I thought of at somebody else's.
Yeah, nope.
Okay.
I like it when they do that. Makes it easy.
Well, they did it this time. Okay, Case 4121 Joseph Anaria for Manchester Sand, Gravel, and Cement Company Incorporated. The applicant wishes to establish a composting facility, materials recycling and processing, principal use L4, and requests the following variances: to Article 285337D, maximum area of lot to be used or designated for outside storage to permit the outdoor compost processing operation, to occupy an area of approximately 239,580 square feet of land area on a lot with a 900-square-foot building, and to waive the restriction that outside storage and processing is allowed only as a ratio of land area to building area of 1.3 to 1, which is the ratio of the area of outside storage to the gross floor area of the buildings on the lot which houses the principal use. Wait, there's more. To Article 2872E Table of Off-Street Parking Requirements to permit the provision of two parking spaces where 49 spaces are required, and to Article 2877H Surfacing and Drainage to permit the use of alternative surfacing for the access drive and parking area in lieu of paved surface. This for property located at 200 Sheep Davis Road on a property the width with the portions in the IN Industrial District and the RO Residential Open Space District. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Holden.
I most certainly do.
Thank you. Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify?
My name is Peter Holden from Holden Engineering. And I'd like to just pass this round. This is the same plan that was submitted, but I colored it up a little bit because there's a lot of lines on it, and...
Sure.
So is it 10 minutes per variance? Do I have half an hour, or do I consolidate it into 10 minutes?
You can push your luck if you want.
I can do both. While that's getting passed around...
Just missed, it's a little easier for me if you kind of explain the whole thing at once.
That's where we're going, yeah.
Right, can we turn that light off? Is that possible?
Want, yeah, want the screen brighter?
Sure.
You can see the poster board, it's white. Yeah, and I gotta point there, so...
These different colors, I'm colorblind, this is...
Thanks.
It's the same color.
No. So, the reason I brought this plan with these colored lines on it is so I could explain where this is and what their... explain where this is and what they're planning to do. This is on Route one-oh-six, and this is the town line. This is that little bridge that has the, the South Cook River going on. Um, if you come from Route three in Pembroke, you go past A&amp;B Lumber, go past the, um, John Deere Tractor Place, and right next to this, and right here, is, uh, insulation company. So, our neighbors are, um, this is Benevento Sand and Gravel. This is a little, a go-kart racetrack that Dick Kruger had. This is the installation company. This is a, um, a lot that I don't believe has anything on this end of it. It's a very steep lot. This is a lot that belongs to the city. It's some leftover land when they had some drainage when they built Industrial Park Drive. This lot belongs to Ken Bradley. He has a, um, a, um, a commercial building there. They sell pipe or something. This is Prescott Pipe. They sell pipe there. And this is the state of New Hampshire, and right here is where they have the, the airplane that they occasionally set on fire, and, uh, it's kinda spectacular fire, so. I was down here once when they did that. So, our neighbors are pretty industrial neighbors. This land is zoned in two zones. One, uh, this is the boundary. This is the South Cook River, the green line, and the orange line through the middle is the zoning line. And, uh, this was owned by Manchester Sand and Gravel a long time ago. They sold it to somebody else. They had a terrible, um, gravel operation in there. I worked for both of them. And, uh, Manchester Sand and Gravel finally bought it back. They took the rest of the gravel out of there, and they came in front of this board and got permits to do that. And they finally restored the property. When you go out there, um, actually, the slope, it's, it's kinda pretty out there. Um, and so, as part of that, um, operation, they had a driveway permit for something like four-hundred trucks a day, uh, onto Route, uh, one-oh-six. And they have a driveway that came in here about to this location and stopped. The blue line on here is the drainage that they constructed as part of the restoration. This goes underneath the driveway, and this goes along the driveway, goes into a retention area, and soaks in the ground. It's, it's, you know, it was a gravel operation. The seasonal water table is, is six or eight feet below the surface of the ground here. So, Mr., um, uh, Benaro wants to, um, start a composting operation there. He has a landscaping business in Massachusetts. And what he does is he comes here, he goes to Dirt Doctor in Pembroke, and he buys a material. He goes to Lebanon Crush Stone and buys material. He goes over to Benevento, and he buys sand, and he hauls it to Massachusetts. And he's seen this property, and he's trying to find a place to do composting, because his composting operation, um, the place he used to bring his composting went out of business. The guy retired, sold it for a lot of money, and now he doesn't have a place to go. He has a number of employees, and he produces a fair amount of, of yard waste. And his yard waste is leaves and grass. There's no branches, there's no trees, there's no stumps, is nothing. Um, and his plan is to bring here, by way of, um, Manchester Street, Route one-oh-six through Pembroke, 'cause that's what his driveway permit says, and come into this, this site and make piles, big windrows of, of leaves and grass that he will turn over and, and make compost. And I got a lesson in how composting works, and it works pretty quickly. So, um, the only thing he wants to do, uh, have, is a building here, is a little building here to put the equipment in, so that it's in, out of the weather.
Does that show on this plan?
Yes, uh, yes, it's, yeah.
It's easier to see on the big plan that is in the packet.
It's the, the green square.
Right, yeah. It's very small. So, right now, there's no-
Oh, yeah.
There's no improvements on the-
The reason I couldn't see it is, is 'cause it's tiny.
Is it what?
Tiny.
Oh.
Relative to the scale of the property.
It is tiny.
Tiny. What's the size of the building?
Thirty by thirty. It's like a garage.
Right there.
And, um, did you ask me a question?
Mm-mm.
So, he, um, he wants to build this little building here to, to store the, um, the equipment in. Presently, the driveway is paved to about here. He is gonna put, his plan is to put some three-inch stone, um, into about where this culvert is, where the gate is. The purpose of that is, it's three-inch rocks, so that when the trucks drive over it, leaving any dirt that's on the tires, gets kinda beat off the tires, and it doesn't end up in, in the highway. Uh, just driving on the pavement, you could keep tracking it. And this is pretty much a standard construction entrance that we use a lot. And so, the, currently, there is nothing out there. There's no improvements. It's, it's grass growing on probably three-quarters of it, weeds growing on the other quarter of it. And, um, along the river, Manchester Sand and Gravel planted pine trees. Uh, I remember when the pine trees were this tall, now they're thirty-five, forty feet tall. And you can't see from here to the river. Um, and there's a conservation easement, and there's a landscape buffer, um, along the, um, along the river. And, um, so his operation will be entirely within the industrial zone, not within the R-O zone that's along the river. So, he's not gonna touch any of this. He's gonna come in on the existing roadway and go into this flat area. Right where I'm pointing is the toe of the slope, and this slope's up pretty, um, pretty abruptly, or it's a two-to-one slope, so it's the way it should be, up to the Prescott Pipe site. So, we started applying for, um, approvals from the planning board. We have to get a conditional use permit. And we are asking for, for three, uh, variances. One has to do with, um, the parking requirements. This is considered, uh, recycling, and because we're piling it up here and storing it, it's outside storage. And so, there's a ratio of outside storage allowed compared to the building size. And so, if we were to use this area, which is a couple hundred thousand square feet of area in the industrial zone, we would need forty-eight parking spaces. And we're proposing two. One for the operator that runs the equipment, and one, because when we did the math, it came out to be one-point-one parking spaces, so we made it two. So, we're looking for variance to only have two parking spaces instead of forty-eight parking spaces. And I think no one anticipated that the use would be this, although it's allowed use. They were thinking it was gonna be some type of office building, industrial building, and, and those people would store something outside, and that would be relative to the number of people that worked inside, or, or move material outside, and so you need these parking spaces, which, in this case, we don't. There's not gonna be any people here except the person that drives in with the truck and the person that runs the, the loader, uh, operation thing. This isn't for people to come and buy compost or leave their compost. No one's coming here. It's not a public place. It's his back operate, backyard operation. So, um, so we're looking to, uh, have, um, only two parking spaces. The second, um, um, variance we're looking for is, there is a, um, ratio of, um, storage to building size. So, our two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand square feet of storage area would require, um, a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two square feet of building space. And, again, I think it was anticipated that if you're gonna have that much outside storage, you probably got this big operation, you're making things in this building, so you need that outside storage, so, you know, the outside storage allowed is, is, is kinda backwards to what we're doing. We're trying to have big storage and no building. So, the, um, the third variance that we're asking for is, um, for paving. Now, um, the ordinance requires that all, um, parking spaces and driveways have, uh, durable dust-free paved surface, degrade and drain, dispose of surface water accumulated along the, unless the planning board issues a conditional use permit. Then, um, they give you a conditional use permit, and one of the requirements is that you reserve land where that parking could go, if you needed it.
Why, why aren't you applying for a conditional use permit rather than a variance for this?
Because we would have to set aside that potential parking area, um, so that, which we will never use.
Well, you don't have, I mean, you just need to show that you can construct a parking area there in, in a particular location.
Right.
If it was covered with compost, that would not make a difference on anything, so, yeah.
Anyways, we just thought that we'd be required to show the parking, and, um, and we are only looking for, um, two parking spaces, and this is a gravel operation. It was a gravel operation for a long time, and it's never had, you know, parking or paving, except for the entrance that we put in, uh, when we got the driveway permit from the state. And we would like to leave it so that, um, the drive areas, the gra- the water soaks in the ground, the parking areas, it soaks in the ground, so that we don't have any, uh, impervious surfaces out there. Something I, I just wanna throw in is, um, there was, at a tech review meeting we had, um, there was a discussion about, if you had a big rainstorm, would the leaves wash towards the river? The ground slopes in this direction. Um, so what we are proposing is, we're building a berm along this edge, right here where this grading is, and this area is big enough to hold, uh, a hundred-year storm twice. So, we could have a hundred-year storm in two days in a row.
It was last week.
And the, um, the water wouldn't go over the top and wouldn't take the leaves with it, so. It's a pretty simple thing for him to build, he's in that business. So, um, so that's what we're looking for, three variances.
On the, on the subject of the, of the gravel drive-
Mm-hmm.
Is that not also available as a CUP? Or am I wrong on that, Craig?
No, the gravel drive would require, um, i- i- if you're a part-time operation that operates less than six months out of the year, then you can have alternative surfaces. But, yeah, I don't, there's nothing I'm-
There's no CUP for that?
Not for the driveway, right.
Okay. Well, no conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Excuse me for interrupting?
Thank you.
I needed to fill a hole in my-
That's, that's really, that's the story, so we're-
Can I test what you've learned about composting?
It's actually kinda interesting.
Yeah.
You pile up leaves. I thought the leaves-
No, my question was, so, how is the material gonna leave the property?
Oh, what he's gonna do is, after it's composted, he's going to come with his trucks that either brought the, the leaves, or trucks that are going over to Benevento's or over to Dirt Doctor, wherever they're going.
Mm-hmm.
And they'll load the truck, and they'll take it back to Massachusetts, and then they use it as part of their landscaping business. So, he's, that's why he doesn't want anything in there, and he's pretty adamant about it. He's, he's a pretty knowledgeable guy, and he's very to-the-point and kind of in-your-face, but, um, he's like, there won't be any sticks in here, because sticks don't compost, and we don't want sticks on the lawn where we're using it. And we don't want branches, and we don't want rocks, and we don't want this stuff, because, so it's leaves and grass.
So, there's no manipulation of it, that, I mean, it gets churned or something, but there's no screening of it or anything?
No, they don't need to. Uh, they just, because, the way he described it to me is, they turn it over every single day, because there's little bugs in there that, um, eat the leaves. They want the bugs warm enough so that they're okay, but they don't want them so hot that they die, 'cause they will die, and then there's no more compost. And then you have to wait for it to cool off, and then you have to, um, start over again. So, they rotate this, or rototill this kind of every single day, uh, which makes the compost work. And, you know, in a month, you can have a pile that's twelve feet tall, and now it's three feet tall. And, uh, I didn't know that, and everybody that I talked to said, "Of course, that's the way it works, don't you know that?" So, so I learned something.
Well, now we all do.
Now we all do, so.
Other questions from the board? Andrew?
With regard to the first variance, which is, um, the ratio of outdoor storage to, um, to, um, building, 'cause this, this came up in this case with, um, forgot his name, but the, the case-
Lock Road?
Yeah. And my understanding of the purpose of that, of that provision is to encourage, for the property tax base, to encourage, um, um, construction. That, um, I guess is, I don't know if that's your understanding, but, um, I guess, what, can you just explain again what the, what the, um, what the rationale is, or what the hardship is that, why we should, you know, allow such a huge, such a gigantic ratio, as opposed to encouraging, um, actual production of finished space there?
Well, it's, um, it's their property. It's an allowed use, and it's, and it, I think, unanticipated use. So, I think when the zoning ordinance was written, people didn't say, "Remember, we gotta have composting and things like that out there." Everybody thought, I always thought, um, that there was gonna be a, some kind of commercial building here, and there'd be parking, and then the ordinance works. He's just, um, making use of it, an allowed use, that doesn't fit with the parking thought at the time, so. So, it's, is it gonna be like this forever? Someday, there's gonna be a commercial building, we can apply the ordinance to it, but, right now, he's, it's his backward, back work area, so.
Do you happen to know, this may, this may be a question for Craig, but, um, is there any zone in the, on the map that would just allow, that doesn't have that ratio requirement?
No, we require a building on, in any lot where outdoor storage is, uh, taking place. This is the most liberal of any, uh, zoning district as far as the ratio of outdoor storage to buildings.
Oh, meaning the most permissive?
Right. Liberal, permissive, yes, yeah.
Other questions from the board? Laura, you have one?
Yeah, I have a question. So, you only plan to have, at most, two staff on-site, the one driving the truck, and then whoever's maintaining the property? So, the, you know, I, I just find that a little odd, I guess, maybe because it's, and now understanding it's only gonna be the property owners' trucks coming in, managing it. But, so the, the place for the, as you've described, it's sort of a storage for the equipment. Is it an office, bathroom? I mean, is this poor staff person out there just sitting in a shed, waiting for a truck to show up? I'm just trying to understand that, 'cause it's being described as if it's just storage for these rototillers, but this is gonna be some pretty large equipment with the size of the rows that are out there. I know a little bit about recycling, I know a little bit about the site from my experience, from my time in Pembroke, but usually, it's not a rototiller like we're thinking of in our head. It's commercial equipment that you're, you're moving this, these items.
Right. And so, the, the purpose of the building is to store the equipment in there. And he anticipates that he's gonna have one person working there, and that he's gonna have trucks that will come in, and they will dump a load of leaves, and the person, if he has all these rows, he has to rot- he has to turn over all those rows every single day.
Yep.
So, he's got, he's got some work to do. Um, and there's, there's nothing else they do. They're not, like, assembling things, or packaging things, or doing anything. They, when the truck, when the, the pile gets composted, it's like, Joe, the pile's ready to go, so the truck comes, maybe dumps some leaves, and, and, uh, goes over, and they load that truck up, and he leaves, so. So, he doesn't anticipate there's gonna be more than one person there. He does anticipate that he will put a bathroom there, uh, for the person, and he has to have, I think there's a state law in New Hampshire, have to have electricity in a building when you build it, so. So, he's talking about putting a solar panel on the roof and having lights inside, and no wires, and no, no, nothing, so.
So, it's not just storage, it's, it's, there's gonna be some sort of office-y space and storage in this one building?
There's really not an office, 'cause they're not coming to do anything.
I meant the poor gentleman that's gonna be there. It's not just gonna be a warehouse and a toilet, I would imagine. There might be a space.
I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a warehouse and a toilet, and two parking spaces.
Okay. Two parking spaces.
There's nothing in the ordinance that says it can't be a warehouse.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Is, is this operate all winter as well?
In the middle of the winter, they don't.
It shuts down for a while?
Yeah, because, you know, it's certainly big in the springtime, big in the fall, when Because, you know, it's certainly big in the springtime, big in the fall when people are doing yard cleanup. And in the springtime, they're hauling stuff out of there and using it. So it's, there will be piles here over the winter. It won't all disappear from November, get composted and used someplace. It'll be piles there in the wintertime. And, and the, the person that works there just won't be there. So he, I know what he's going to do. He's going to plow snow in Massachusetts, is what he's going to do. So, because that's what these landscape guys tend to do. Plow snow in the wintertime and landscape in the summertime, so.
Any questions, Jim?
Just if it was going to be a composting toilet.
I almost said that.
Yeah. This is a question I'm going to ask, Craig. I just, it's a, so it's not an agricultural use, it's a recycling use. I just, it could have gone either way in my mind, but.
Generally, agricultural use is going to be process, growing, processing materials on-site, something of that nature. Where they're, man, you bring product in from off-site, they're actually processing it, and then redistributing it, it really falls into the manufacturing and processing.
Yeah, I just want to be careful that what was represented to us, it's in the minutes, I know that. But because if it's broadly recycling, then it could become something other than leaves and, and grass, right?
No, this is specifically leaves. I guess if we wanted to recycle cars or something, we would have to come back. But he, he, he's on that business.
Yes, we'd be having a different conversation.
Yeah, right. Okay. Nick?
No questions?
No. All right. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it?
I just would like to be heard.
Well, then come.
In opposition of it, but I certainly want to be heard.
Well, come right up, and we will listen to what you have to say.
I have to nick off every time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Will both of you be testifying?
This is my father-in-law, Ron. My name's Richard Hill. I live at 203 Sheep Davis Road.
All right. Gentlemen, are you both going to testify?
Yes.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, we do.
All right. Would you, you've already identified yourself. Would you identify yourself, sir, for the record?
Yes, I'm Ronald Mahoney, his father-in-law. I live next door, same house.
Very good. What would you like us to know, gentlemen?
Well, just a concern. So as he introduced all of the budding properties around there, he neglected to say, I live across the street. It's a residence. So I just want the zoning board to know that. There is a residence directly across from where they're suggesting to put this. Now, when I first saw the letter, I went, oh, dear God, composting? What are they composting? And then as I read, thank you very much for a very thorough idea of what you're composting, because I'm thinking, oh, good Lord, they putting food over here? And that's not going to be a fun day. But I certainly is, is that, I just want them to know there's a residence across there. So the impact of how many trucks are coming in and out, all those kinds of things. The other question I have is, is that if this variance is granted, and the land is sold, does the variance go with it?
Yes, it does.
Right? And that concerns me, because now somebody has an open window to do a much larger scale of problems in their.
No, they don't. The variance goes with the land, but the, the use, the specific use and the details of the use that were described to us tonight and in the application have to still be, have to obtain for the variance to be in effect. If somebody comes along and says, well, I want to, I want to do, I don't know, metal reclamation or something there, that's a total, as Craig said about cars, it's a totally different story. The variance would not apply, they'd have to start all over.
In addition, this will be going to the planning board for a major site plan review, which would be an excellent place to bring up your concerns with vehicles coming and going, and headlights if it's granted tonight. So, yeah, they'll be looking at that in that area, too.
Yeah. When I was hearing 49 parking spaces, I'm going, oh, dear God, what do you mean, they get 49 parking spaces? If somebody was to buy it, they have the ability to do that? I'm like, oh, that's not.
No, and I was going to, meant to finish up with the site pla, but with the site plan approval, then they will also be restricted to that layout, that area of usage, too.
Okay. Yeah, that would, like I said, the concern is, is that in the beginning of the proposal, he never said there's a residence directly across the way. He said, we're surrounded by industrial. You're not. You've got a residence directly across from you.
Very good.
And so I just hope that that's something to think about as far as to what kinds of future possibilities could happen once this variance goes through. You know, what, what somebody might come, you know? Because God knows, he may stay and keep composting forever. Who knows? But maybe not.
Well, if he does that, the variance would apply forever.
Yeah.
But if it changes in any significant way, then the variance no longer applies, and it's as if the variance never existed.
All right. So.
Is he leasing the land, or are they buying it?
I cannot answer that question.
Okay.
You could check in with Mr. Holden, he might, he might be able to answer that question.
About hours of operation. Can they go in there at 12 o'clock at night, or?
Well, that's a good question, and I think maybe we'll ask that of Mr. Holden before we close the hearing. I think that's something we probably should have asked sooner. Any other questions?
No, those are the ones we had.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
We appreciate your time.
You bet.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to be heard? Craig, any comments from code enforcement?
Yeah. I was just trying to see if I had a copy of the noise ordinance, because they would be subject to the noise ordinance. And then, but those would further be restricted. But, yeah, just to continue with what Andrew had mentioned before, and it's not too dissimilar to the situation we had down in Lock Road before. You know, the purpose of this ratio is to ensure that our limited industrial land is not, you know, just used up for something of this nature, without putting any significant improvements onto the property. And in addition to having the physical improvements on the property, which increase the tax base, you know, many of those places, Eastern Analytical is building one right now up on Antrim Road, a new factory, and so the jobs come along with those things. So that's the main interest of wanting to maintain industrial land to be developed as buildings and jobs, and not just a large storage field.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Holden, would you like to offer factual clarification, perhaps on the subject of the hours of operation or anything else that you, in response to anything else that you heard?
We actually didn't talk about that. I thought we would do that as part of our conditional use permit. But I will stick my neck out and say, we won't start before 7:00, and we will end before 7:00.
Okay.
Five days a week or seven days a week?
I think that they would want to be able to do this, especially when they're busy in the fall, on, on six days a week. And I don't think, knowing Mr. Benara, that he would expect anyone would work on Sunday, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
But they could.
But they could, yeah.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for variances to permit a composting facility on a property on Sheep Davis Road. We heard testimony that there is no need for a large building, so the building ratio to open storage space would make this an infeasible operation up there, even though it is allowed by right. It is allowed by right, correct? Correct?
Well, yes, allowed by right, conditioned upon the other requirements.
Conformance to the zoning ordinance, yeah. We also heard testimony that, in the case of the parking, that they don't need anywhere near as much parking as would be required under the ordinance. And on the last subject, we heard testimony that a conventional paved road actually would work against them rather than for them, given the type of use they plan to, to put this to. Maybe start this one with Jim. What do you think about this, Jim?
Can we talk about each variance separately?
Of course.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can we start with Laura? She's got something to say, I think.
Scott?
You speak first.
What can you, what can you tell us?
Well, let's, I'm going to pick the parking one first, because that's, I think that's the easiest one. I think their request is, is reasonable. I always hate the idea of doing more parking than someone needs, because usually, it's the other way. They want more parking than their requirements, what's required. I, I understand why they're asking, or I, I actually support the variance as opposed to just the conditional use permit. Because if they're telling me they only want two parking spaces, I don't want to say, show me where 46 or however many, 49 should go, because then all of a sudden, they can go do it. They can say later, you know, we really like the idea of having 49 parking spaces, when they, you know, said to us, we only want two, because now they've done the layout, and the planning board has said, okay, if you need this later, go ahead and do it. Again, I think if they're only going to need that, it's reasonable. It's in, I'm a fan of not over paving areas if we don't have to. So that's my, on the parking piece.
Okay. Did you want to talk, comment on the other ones?
No, I kind of wanted to do them all separate, so.
Yeah, I agree with Laura on the, on the parking. It's the easiest one.
Parking's fine with me.
Andrew?
I know we're doing them separate, but I, I'm caught up on number one. So in my mind, it does relate to number two, because I think the reason for the parking requirement is the concept is there's going to be a structure here of industrial use.
No.
Okay.
No, I think the parking calculations here is based on outside storage areas. If it was a building, it would have a much higher parking calculation.
In that case, I don't, I don't have a problem with number two. I think it's, as far as I can tell, not that different than what they would need to get the conditional use permit, because there's clearly would be enough parking for 49 spaces there if they wanted to put it, the whole space is available for parking.
I, on the subject of parking, I think their request is reasonable. I agree with Laura that I prefer in general to see less pavement, not more, and fewer cars, not more. So I think that's consistent with the intent of the ordinance. The reason for the parking requirement is to see you don't have people parking in the road. And there's no danger of that in this case, so.
And if I could just bump in as a, jump in as a point of clarification. So under the materials, processing, and recycling category for parking, units and measurements, they do say gross floor area and outside storage yard area. And then we require one per 800 square feet of gross floor area, and then one per 5,000 square feet of outside storage area. So we do have a separate calculation for outside storage area.
So it comes out to about one for the small building, and the rest of it is for the outside?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. Suppose we then entertain a motion on the subject of the parking variance only, which was which one? Number?
Two.
Two. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion to grant.
Is there a second? A second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Variance number two is granted. Now, let's, let's go to variance three, because I think that's next in the hit parade of easier questions. What are your thoughts on that, Nick? That's the surface drainage to use alternative surfacing.
Meaning the three.
The gravel driveway, yeah. Yeah.
You know, I don't know much about the dynamics of, of heavy truck operations, but that certainly sounds like a logical reason to, to argue for that.
I agree.
I agree. They already have an existing pavement apron for, off the road. The gravel drive is there, and then again, it's more environmentally sound, especially sitting on this property with the drainage into the, the river.
Into the river. Andrew?
I think if I understood, the testimony was that the, the reason is to allow the dirt to come off of the trucks before it got onto the road.
Uh-huh.
Which I don't have any reason to doubt that.
Well, that's just the grate at the entrance. The rest of the driveway is going to be just standard dirt paving, yeah. So that's what they're requesting, is the entire driveway. And if I can just jump in, you know, in consideration, though, too, perhaps you can make, if you go in the affirmative, make a note that they will need to address fugitive dust issues at the planning board level. So there is a program in place to prevent that. And that's the purpose for the paving, is to prevent, I'm sure they'll talk about it, but it's always helpful if there'd be a little more encouragement for the ZBA on something like that.
What is it called, fugitive dust?
Fugit, just, just dust, yeah. So in, in a gravel pit or someplace of this nature, you know, you normally have a regular routine of wetting down, or calcium, or whatever it is. You know, with the proximity to the shoreline protection area, it may have limited, you know, types of materials they could use there. But it would be important to have that in place to eliminate that excessive dust from blowing into Pembroke.
I like that term, fugitive dust. I mean, as opposed to say delinquent dust, renegade dust, or?
Yeah, I wrote an entire ordinance on that one.
Did you? Well, I, I, I think it's a great term. Fugitive dust, indeed. So have we all spoken up on the subject? I, I agree with the gravel driveway for the reasons that everyone else does. Would anyone care to make a motion on item three?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second, if we can put in the condition that there is a dust control plan.
All right. Is that acceptable with the motion? Very good. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance number three is approved, which brings us to variance number one. And this has to do with the amount of area of building as it relates to the amount of area of outdoor storage. Who wants to go first? Anyone?
I'm just, I'm open to hearing other people's opinions and being persuaded, but my initial reaction is I'm having a hard time distinguishing this from the case that we deny. The only difference is, frankly, their plan seems more commercially viable. They seem to have a, like an actual plan for what they want to do. But the logic of the ordinance, as I understand it, is to encourage actual industrial use. And, you know, the ratio that they're proposing is about 250 to one instead of 1.3 to one.
What are your thoughts on it, Laura?
Obviously, that's why I wanted them all separated. I agree with Andrew. I have a hard time distinguishing it from our, sort of hard time. This has more of a plan. It's a, there's a, a plan of what's going to happen as opposed to just storing items out there. But I didn't hear enough of why it's a hardship, why the ordinance is a hardship, and why they should have relief from it. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great use of the property. I understand why, not, again, not having construction when you don't need, need to have it. But I don't know if I heard enough of why there's a hardship as opposed to, we just don't need it, or want it at this point. But I, I love the use. I think it's perfect for the site.
Craig, exactly what is the use, as it's defined in the ordinance that we're looking at here?
Well, materials, recycling, and processing. So it does cover a broad range in anything from your, what we used to call junkyards, to this type of organic operation.
Right. Okay.
You know, we have a plant down on South Main Street right now, which is, we're dealing with separately, but that is being classified under the same use classification as materials, processing, and recycling. Because bringing the material in, they process it there, they separate it, and then they haul it off to some other location.
Right. Jim, what do you think about it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my arms around the fact of, is this an industrial use? Industrial activity or not? You know, I'm sensitive to the observations that we've heard that this is, this, we have limited industrial space in the city, and this is, is this industrial or not? So this would be, I'd love to have some guidance from the city's economic development staff about whether or not this is removing prime industrial space from the city that we're gonna regret at some point in the future, but.
Nick?
Well, I don't know. In terms of the hardship, I think the hardship is that requiring such a huge building for the storage of maybe a couple of vehicles kind of puzzles me a little bit.
It's, it certainly evokes the Lock Road project. There are a couple of things about it that strike me as different, that could be, you could argue represent a hardship created by the ordinance. One is that, as the appellant said, this particular use, although allowed by right and even defined as a recycling type use, was not, they didn't think through, when we wrote the ordinance, they, we didn't think through how something like this might work in that type of zone, this type of zone. So, they're kind of orphaned by the, for this use by that ordinance. The other thing that's different in my mind is that the Lock Road situation was strictly storage. It was, they were just going to put something there and leave it there until they wanted to take it away. There was no reason to have it there as opposed to somewhere else, and there was nothing that was gonna happen to it there, other than that it was gonna sit. Here, we actually have the operation of the business taking place in the outside storage. So, to me, it's sort of like a nursery or other types of businesses where there's really something going on. So, I see it as a little bit different. I'm not sure that the economic plan behind the ordinance, as it was conceived of, is exactly within our purview in terms of whether or not we should be granting a variance. That may be, but it's not, it's not one of the criteria for a variance, that it be the highest and best use for the land, that we not diminish the tax base by doing it. So, from my point of view, even though that may have been the reason, that it may be that there's a glitch in the way the ordinance was written, or what's allowed and so forth. In the case of Lock Road, they were asking simply to do something that's not permitted, period, with no particular rationale for why we should allow it, and that's why we said no.
I would contest that, because again, it's the storage of materials, and storage materials is otherwise permitted, except for not having a building.
Right, but he didn't wanna have a building. Here, at least, they do have a building. I'll grant you, it's not the Taj Mahal, does have a bathroom, but they went so far as to build a building. So, the idea behind having a building and storage and not just creating storage places around town in this zone, to my mind, especially when you consider the fact that they're actually actively using this storage for a purpose, to create a useful product, I, it puts it in a different category for me.
Well, it's also their, their use is allowed. It's the building that, the square, because it's materials recycling and processing, what they're using it for is an allowed use. It's the size of the building that's the variance question, not the, not the storage of the leaves and the turning of the grass. It's the actual building, right?
Technically, it's not an allowed use if they are not meeting all the criteria.
Well, no, I meant it's.
Yeah, it, the variance is to allow the use in general on this basis.
If they meet all the other criteria.
Right. If they've met all the other criteria, you don't need a variance, but because it is, it is therefore considered not a permitted use in this case.
Point taken.
Is there, is there any similarity to the same operation that occurs in Cochrane on Fort Natty Road, right behind Cava? That's a recycling, materials recycling area.
Yeah.
You mean right across from?
That's a city facility. That's been, that stump thump has been there since the beginning of time.
What about dirt doctors?
They're in Pembroke.
That's in Pembroke and?
And they got, you know, they, and they established up on, you know, they came before the board years ago, so.
So, listening to Chris, when now I'm observing, it's one of the glitchy things, is it's not, not exactly storage, right? Because it's, you know, some things, some processing is taking place there. It's organic, and it's bugs and worms and making it happen. It's not just left there to be moved somewhere else. There's something occurring there, so.
Right. Let's say, for example, that in order for this to work, they had to put a canopy over each one of these rows of stuff, and we considered that a building, then we'd be looking at a totally different situation.
Yeah, I don't know that the composting science works as well with a canopy over there.
No. But we'd in effect have the same thing going on, and we'd have no real reason to say no. Now, obviously, you can't make up an alternative reality in order to grant a variance, but it sounds like I just tried to. The, again, I've gone as far, I think, as I can constructively go on.
Stupid question, but like, say like a farm, right? That's obviously, they don't, they don't meet the ratio.
Well, the farm is, the farm is in an agricultural district, so the requirements for that operation in that zoning district are completely different. If we allowed composting facilities in an agricultural district, actually, we do for these, and because it is, you know, it's partially considered agricultural operations. Actually, there's a composting facility right out on Silk Farm Road that is operated as part of the farming environment, and it's incorporated in it. They do bring in stuff from outside, but again, it's part of that operate, whole entire agricultural operation. This is just specific, the manufacturing of this material, so.
So, the, the, the ratio requirement does not apply in an agricultural district?
Correct.
So, would this be allowed in an agriculture district, this composting operation?
It's allowed, I would have to make an interpretation on this as a standalone primary use, because as standalone primary use, it is classified as materials processing and recycling, and that would not be permitted in that zoning district. Again, it is my, as Jim, or as you mentioned too, the zoning ordinance might not be up to date with this type of process, this particular materials, and there are a few around town, but, you know.
Oh, so this, at least the way it's currently interpreted, this exact type of use is in the industrial, must be industrial.
Right. There's no differentiation between the material processing organic materials than processing scrap iron materials. They both fall under the same use category and have the same requirements.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen. We've all had our say. We've come to the moment of truth. Would anyone care to make a motion either for or against the granting of this variance? This is variance number one, maximum area of allot to be used and so on.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just observed, I think that even though Laura raised the issue on the hardship, I think the fact that the, the activity here where it probably was not envisioned at the time that the, the ordinance was created, creates a hardship. And then given the, my concerns are expressed earlier, I think the glitchiness of, of this activity not exactly being storage and maybe not exactly being, you know, manufacturing kind of creates a hardship, not the same type of hardship, but for the applicant, that it's, given all that, I think it's a reasonable use of the, of the property.
Any other discussion?
I agree. I think that when the ordinance was written, it was envisioning more the traditional recycling materials reclamation, which you always want in a building because of what it looks like, what it is, the type of operation. I don't think this was ever envisioned, and when it was, it was always usually part of an agricultural use, which is why there wasn't that floor to building ratio, so I am in favor of the request, and the discussion was helpful. Thank you, guys.
Any other discussion?
I respectfully, I understand the positions, but I'm not, I'm not persuaded. Unlike like solar or something where there's a whole new technology that the code really didn't envision it, I don't see why, I mean, this isn't a new, I mean, composting is obviously not new. I mean, I don't see why this wouldn't, maybe when they wrote the code, they just made a mistake, but then, you know, then that's something for city council, because I don't think this is a new type of use that wasn't anticipated.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The vote is four to one with Mr. Winters in the minority. The variance is granted. And that brings us to the last case on our agenda this evening, which is case forty-three twenty-one, Michael Folds or Folds. The applicant wishes to construct a sixteen-foot by sixteen-foot mudroom on the easterly side of their single-family dwelling, and request a variance to the table of dimensional regulations to permit a structure to be located thirty-seven feet plus or minus from the front property line, where a fifty-foot setback is required. Construct a six-foot by four-foot roof over the front entry stairs, and request a variance to the table of dimensional regulations to permit a structure to be located twenty-seven feet plus or minus from the front property line, where a fifty-foot setback is required. They wish to construct two thirteen-by-four-foot pergolas, one on either side of the front entry stairs, and request a variance to Article twenty-eight, four, one, H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to permit a structure to be located with a closest point of twenty-seven feet plus or minus from the front property line, where a fifty-foot setback is required for property located at sixty West Parish Road in an RRO residential open space district. Do you both swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
I'm Dana Folds.
Mike Folds.
What would you like us to know by way of support for your requests?
Purchased this house at the end of two thousand and eighteen after finding out Dana became a tenured teacher in town, looking for a forever home. Project on the interior, total gut job, which was not necessarily planned originally, but we wanted to make it ours, after finding some things behind the drywall, needless to say. The code officials were extremely helpful in doing so. David was structural at the time, I believe. Pedro finished it up. Turned a nineteen-sixties garrison colonial into something that's a hundred percent up to code as far as modern, one-hundred percent modern plumbing. I mean, I could light a candle and keep that place warm, heat pump radiant floors, yada, yada, yada. We are looking to max, match the exterior to be as functional and beautiful as the interior. That is definitely not my house. So, as far as the front steps and pergola is concerned, front steps are to keep snow off them, keep them safe. Pergola would be to hide the, in my opinion, ugly garrison bumpout, as well as grow.
Outdated.
Outdated, I'm sorry, if anyone has a garrison here. But as well as have climbing plants on the pergola to reduce the cooling load in the summer to maximize our currently very energy-efficient house. Mudroom, in full disclosure, I was under the impression that that was not a setback issue, similar to what Mr. Mattson said. I originally applied with it being fifty-one feet from the property line. Came to find out, property line's fourteen feet further back than I actually thought.
In other words, it's, it's in what you thought was your lawn?
True, yeah. I, we moved from Andover, where it's a dirt road, and no one knows where the lines are, needless to say. So, I just, I literally went out there with a tape measure and went to the edge of the road.
Happens to everyone.
Yeah, so, but truth is, the mudroom will still be set back four feet further than the current structure, but it's not within the current setback ordinance, although it wasn't the sixties when it was built. The other homes built in the same area, combination of ranches, capes, colonials, I am probably further away than seven out of the eight on that row of that side of the street there.
Are you on the part of West Parish Road that is west of Carter Hill Road or east of Carter Hill Road?
East, I believe.
East toward, down toward?
Going towards Hutchins.
Here's Carter Hill Road here, north is up, so they're east, that section that's a little bit east there, and, you know, there's.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, Carter, my section of Carter Hill Road, I'm on the wrong side of the tracks. It's a couple of big, beautiful mansions on one side. On the other side, it's eight nineteen-sixties homes, which are, you know, lovely and perfect for us, but, but the comparables are on my side of the road, not on the other side, is my point.
Understood. It's not really our purview.
So, the mudroom and the pergola are basically, they're not dependent on each other, or they're two totally different?
No, so, it was more of a, you know, killing three birds with one stone. We were approved for a dormer on the backside attic to create a teenage hangout for my nine-year-old daughter. If we're going that far, might as well do the metal roof that we've always wanted. If we're doing that, the siding, if we're doing the siding, the mudroom and the front of the house, the original permits to the code officials separated everything out, and then when we found out about the setback issue with the mudroom, that's when we put it together for you all.
Okay. So, the mudroom setback, the front steps with the roof on them would be in the setback, and the front yard setback as well, for the obvious reason, if the mudroom is, they would have to be, and the pergola as well?
Yeah, so the twenty-seven-foot figure that is quoted on there is the closest spot of the pergola, if you're standing on the road looking at my house all the way to the left.
How deep would the pergola be? The drawing, I have to confess, you're not gonna win any drafting prizes here.
My handwriting's no better.
I'm having a hard time figuring out exactly where the pergola comes out. Is this, does it come out even with the front, the little front vestibule that you're trying to create?
Yes, yep. So, it's gonna, the roof, vestibule, whatever you call it, is gonna be roughly six feet wide by four feet deep off the structure, at which point, come off the side of that with a pergola. It was suggested to us that we don't attach the pergola to the house, but that would involve, you know, three times as many posts and not be as aesthetically pleasing in my mind.
I see.
So, the pergola run the link to the front of the house?
Yeah, so thirty-two feet total minus the six feet in the center that the vestibule would be, so twenty-six, thirteen on each side.
Pergola counts as a structure, Craig?
Yes.
If you attach it to the house, it does.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Questions from the board?
The height of the pergola, just the first floor?
Yeah.
Not gonna go up to roofline?
Yeah, so the, the ceiling of the vestibule, so to speak, would be in line with where the garrison bumpout is, at which point that's where the, I apologize for not knowing the terms, but the ledger board for the pergola would be at that garrison height with the four foot.
So, the bottom of the pergola would be more or less even with the soffit on the, which is the ceiling, if you will, of the garrison push-up?
Correct.
Other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Oh, I think it's important to note that without the mudroom addition, we wouldn't have a first-floor bathroom, because we currently, the way we redesigned the house, don't have a bathroom on the first floor, so that would be the hardship that the, yeah, without this variance.
So, the mudroom includes a bathroom?
Yes.
I see.
Bathroom and storage. My father comes over on Sundays to watch golf and?
He hates stairs.
Hates stairs.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The record will show that there was no one present to speak either for or against the appeal. Any comments from code enforcement?
No, I don't have any comments.
No comments?
It was my last chance, but I'll forego it.
Next month, you can come and sit in the audience.
You should recite a poem or something here, I think.
Not on live TV.
All right. Very good. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a front yard setback variance. We heard testimony that even the, that the part of the construction, even though behind the facade act, away from the street facade of the building, still is in the front yard setback, which is to say that the building was built before the ordinance was created. And we also heard that the, for the same reason, the vestibule and the pergola would be in the front yard setback. Mr. Winters, what do you think?
Well, the mudroom, you know, I think is a reasonable use, and, you know, clearly, it's, I don't think it's, you know, competing into the setbacks significantly more or at all than from what the current house is. And the roof, which is number two, that also seems like a reasonable use and a pretty modest, you know, the pergola sounds beautiful, and, you know, I'm open to hearing what other people say, but I, to me, that's, it's harder to see the hardship, because that's less of a common, you know, I don't, you know, that's, I don't think that, I mean, you'd see pergolas, but I don't, I think that's more of kind of a luxury item, so to speak, than say a mudroom, which I think is more of a functional, very common use for a home in this neighborhood.
I think their requests are reasonable. They still have, they're, they're not right up against the setback. They're trying to leave as much space as possible, and I give them credit for putting in all the work to bring that house up to current standards and safety. for putting in all the work to bring that house up to current standards and safety. So I have no concerns.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree with Laura. I do think, though, with regard to the pergola, the applicant did suggest that part of it was to get vinyl growth on it, create, reduce the amount of heat that would hit the building. They put a lot of, made a big investment in energy efficiency here, and I think this adds to that.
Nick?
I agree, and also I noticed that probably this house is further back from the setbacks than the other properties on West Parish Road. That's testimony that we heard. So I think even with the addition of the pergolas, they're less intrusive into the setbacks than neighboring properties.
I'm, I'm inclined to grant the variances. I have to, in the interest of full disclosure, admit that I just drew a pergola on the south side of the house for precisely this purpose, so I don't consider it anything other than necessary. And beautiful. All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to grant the variances as requested.
All three variances?
All three.
Is there a second?
I'll second all three.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. All three variances are granted. Now, you're welcome.
Moved to accept the minutes from last month.
I wasn't here, so I can't vote on that one. Anyone want to second that one?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any other business before us?
Nothing that I, yeah, no.
Before we send you riding off into the sunset?
Nope, that, that will be my swan song.
All right. Well done. Well done.
Nothing, Dad.
What's the official rule for when you're allowed to join the board?
It's like never, never.
I would not do that to my predecessor.